By the Civic Center Commission and the trustee are reimbursed. And so you'll note that this ultimately zeros out at the bottom. For them, biggest one is they continue to cover costs on the elevator. We have a wind stream line that we have to have. Elevator has to have a call number inside of it to communicate. It's incredibly expensive since we don't have any other wind stream going in there. It's all digital.
Calls us.
So. And then the big one is they continue to move this. They've kind of moved on from just being an ADA project. They're gonna do a full remodel, including the ADA, to update the facility. Look at trims, flooring, furniture, you name it.
When are we? This is not much related, I apologize, but just when are we going to be discussing the issue that we discussed with Civic Center Commission regarding SCCDP?
Yeah, let me know, I won't be here that night.
When the trustee gets an attorney. The quick answer is when the trustee acquires an attorney so that we can have Kelly, a brief Kelly on it, Tim.
So the ball is in the Civic Center's hands?
Well, the trustee's hands, not the Civic Center.
Okay, and the Civic Center trustee is in the process of?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Alright, thank you.
So those two will get together and then they have to figure out the process to update everybody. There's a concern about how much space is being utilized by SCCDP and a request for additional space to expand their offices. Cause as you know, they've had a growing number of employees. Well, there was an issue between the Civic Center Commission, the trustee, and SCCDP where they just couldn't figure out under the trust what was appropriate. And they were kind of at a standstill. And the way that they ended it, and we had three council members there, Jonathan was there, myself was there, was we need to go back and get a judge to essentially say, here's what the trust needs, here's what SCCDP is, yes, they can be there. So you guys need to sort it out or no. They've morphed into something that's beyond just the sewer chamber, which is what I think they're defined as in the trust, which is a document that's written like nearly a hundred years ago now. And so the judge will just have to make that decision. And then Kelly, and we're gonna have to pay him, so. There you go, Tim. It's not, not part of our contract. Kelly is representative of the city who represents the commission. Cause the commission is represented by the city, they don't represent the trust. Will represent us and then the trust will get their own attorney. And that's who the parties will be and they'll go and get a judge's decision made on how to proceed forward.
So do they contribute all the SCCDP utilities or rent or anything like that?
Yeah, we help out with some technology related things, like we share, actually installed the backend system to run internet into building. But then the Civic Center Commission installed like nodes throughout for wireless related things. Yeah, ultimately, we had to do some of the build out for room one that we're in where we have three team members all in the same office.
So Alyssa, the way that the trust documents are written, is this the SCCDP at the time called the Chamber is able to stay there and utilize that space? It's written into the trust that way? The question really is, are they?
Space can they grow into?
Well, it comes down to space and also there is a group of the trust who believes that they are no longer a chamber.
Cause they've changed over the years.
Because they've changed and grown over the years.
Are we gonna credit the chamber? We are an accredited chamber of commerce.
Yeah, correct.
That's the argument.
We don't need it, we don't.
No, not you. I just was wondering if they, if that's where some of the operation, like revenue is coming? That SCCP paid for like rent per se or like they were pro rated for any of their utilities or they just get to be housed there underneath the trust?
The trust identifies specifically the women's club and the chamber.
As that is our home.
Tenant tenants.
And we made the decision, let the judge make a decision.
Yep. The reason that we have the money in here is this stems more from the two or three weeks that City Administrator Butcher took off one hat and became Civic Center Manager Butcher. When me and Bob Corr and his wife were literally standing in the men's room with my arms shoved all the way down a toilet trying to deflect water so I wouldn't flood the Civic Center anymore.
A human plug?
Yeah, when we ran downstairs and there was literally water shooting out of the electric panel on the wall, just like a geyser. And I had to have that whole panel replaced in a matter of like two hours. So that facility is just, especially the older portion of the building is not built to modern standards. We don't have floor drains, all kinds of things like that. We need to do some renovations on it now. And so we can tackle ADA and do some of these renovations and probably not interrupt anything that would limit Jonathan and the growth if that were to happen.
So Kelly will be getting, will be representing the city on this?
That's our plan, he is the city attorney and it is the city, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
So the trust in itself is collected, what was I going with that? I lost it, cause I was trying to think of your question during answering.
The trust owns assets, farmland and things like that that they receive income from. And then the two beneficiaries are the city, the Civic Center, and then the hospital.
So then how did that facility become the responsibility of the city to oversee?
In the trust, it was given to us.
Okay.
So if the trust folded, sold all its assets and disappeared, the Civic Center would still be ours, but then we would just have to fund it essentially with general funds.
Got you, okay.
Alright, any other questions on Civic Center? Alright, moving on. Next is debt service, this is essentially just us paying our debts for bonded issues and things we borrow against. Total debt service is one million seventy-three thousand nine hundred and forty-eight. A portion of that though, we have some funds in the debt service fund currently, correct? Nick, and so we utilize those funds to help pay this down. Any questions on debt service? Moving on. Let's see, I'll make sure I'm following my items. Next is the pool, diving pool. No significant items here, we continue to diagnose issues and leaks and look for efficient ways to address them. The water department has drained the pool. They're gonna utilize their camera system and try and go in there and take a look, but the major leak that we identified at the beginning of the season after two weeks, won't say disappeared, but it went somewhere else. So we do have essentially what you would refer to as a French drain system. It goes all the way around the pool underneath the concrete and then it drains into a waste or a stormwater cell that you can hear running. So it might just be finding its way back into there now, so. But they are gonna camera it and just check out, having the coldest temperature ever recorded in recent time this past February. We're just wondering if potentially had some cracks and some fittings and things like that. And maybe it flex back out, but they're gonna take a look at it. Other than that, no significant items. Revenues kind of continue to go back up now that we have a normal, regular swim season again.
As far as your salaries on that one, is that strictly pool employees or do you have other departments that are stacked on that one?
That's just seasonal pool employees.
Strictly a pool.
Alright, that is the pool. Economic Development, LBA forty. Every year, we set aside a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in city sales tax to fund the LBA forty program. In addition, we also receive loan principal and interest payments back. We budget now all of that money that we project to be spent every year. And then we, if we go shorter than that, good for us. But we project that every year, so this year we project that we'll receive approximately two hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars in sales tax repayments. And we project to spend that same amount.
Are there any current applicants right now for that?
There are no open applicants.
And when is open date, is there like an open post date on that?
Nope, it's always, always open, but there are no open applications right now. Everything has either been funded or there are no pending applications, so.
And that's for like business startup or are there certain requirements for LBA?
There are requirements for LBA forty. They're written into the application, but it's essentially for commercial purposes. Heavenly leaning towards manufacturing industry. There's a retail element, small, on the smaller side, job creation, but that's what we use. Working capital, working capital. It's really about, it, it, it tends to come down to what the business is, so.
Right, right.
If you're enterprising, you can request working capital and then do with it as you will. So again, two hundred and seventy-eight thousand five hundred and ninety-five is what we project. We're anticipating all to go out the door, just so it meets within our budget standards. Next is the big one, the electric fund. We'll start right off the bat. The electric fund, we've offered up on the revenue side pursuant to our NMPP rate study. It's projected out requesting a three percent rate increase. And so you see that before you, that would generate approximately three hundred thousand dollars in additional revenue. We already talked about the ten percent franchise fee, covered that. Essentially what we're seeing is just the rising cost of materials going up. And so this is heavy on materials for us, wire and all the things that go with it. Same on the, on the salary side, power purchase, we've also increased from where we, and that's based on last year. And so you're three percent correct, Nick.
Yep.
Is based on the ending balance, not what we budgeted. And so we're also anticipating a power purchase increase based on what we actually use as a percentage of that.
Okay, so electric, is that district, two-one-one point oh one? Is that how that's, is that like the electric district, is that what that's classified as?
Which one?
The, on electric.
Two-one-one oh one?
S T salary?
Yes.
Okay, who's, is that strictly the electric department employees then? Okay. And then on the admin, which is the two-fourteen point oh one, that's everybody in City Hall?
Yep. Put information in your memo about the most recent NMP rate survey. We're currently fifty-second lowest out of a hundred and thirty-one communities as a range across all different. Cause they survey like commercial low user, commercial mid-level user, industrial user, low residential, mid-residential, large residential users. And they look at that and compare them at different levels. So we average fifty out of a hundred and thirty-one and some of our commercial rates were the twelfth lowest out of a hundred and thirty-one. But it just designs on, based on your design and build, so.
Two-thirteen, Ken, are they buying the Art Flash or are they renting it through a company?
Two-thirteen.
The uniforms, Art Flash safe uniforms.
Oh, they purchased those.
Are they going through like Concentra or something like that?
Yeah, they're.
Airmark?
No, no.
I'd rather see, I hope that they're looking out for somebody laundering it. We're not having them launder their own Art Flash because that's a no-no.
I don't know off the top of my head, we can ask that question.
You know, they, they send, send some of their uniform and stuff off, you know, they're putting it off to get tested and it's possibly cleaned and stuff out of.
That's just NFP regs on that they like you enough to take it home because of.
Yeah, so you, you basically put it on at work, you change out of it at work, you send it off to launder facility that specifies all the requirements of that and then you get a new uniform the next day that's waiting for you when you come in typically is how it works.
Send boss airmark, usually, yeah. Done this for a while there, might save some money if they plus them as life.
I have a question, I might be a stupid question, that's a question. So on your bill, you're always charged like a meter charge?
Mm-hmm.
Why?
That's the way the system is set. Meter charge or customer charges are guaranteed revenue. And so when they set up their revenue systems, they want a base level guaranteed revenue. And then, cause the user controls the usage obviously. And so they try to balance out and NMPP can define more of this knowledge than I can. But your meter charge is a guaranteed revenue. I know exactly how many meters in play, I know exactly what that revenue will be. You'll tend to see that if you're looking for guaranteed revenue, an increase in the meter charge, we would guarantee you'll generate more revenue.
And so is that where that three percent is gonna increase on?
They mix it across the board.
Do you do it use and meter?
Yes, they'll adjust meter and use. Sometimes you'll see the use go down and the meter go up. I think that's what the last one was, I'm correct. But now, it depends on the proportions. On the capital side, one of the biggest ones for us is the AMI system. We just met the other day with Larry, Jared, Michelle, Kirsten in my office who handles billing. We have three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars set aside for next budget year. We used a little bit of our portion this year, most of it slid because of the supply chain. Getting all of this stuff now is incredibly hard. We originally going into the summer anticipated receiving the new meters in November or December. On the phone call yesterday, they said July. And it's just because of one microchip element that's in it that they can't acquire, so they pushed us to July potentially. It caught Larry off guard, cause I thought that was a really odd time on a random Zoom meeting to tell us this. So, cause we thought we were in line to acquire them November, December and start the implementation process. So we put up the DCUs and got those sets. If you've seen some relatively large poles around town with nothing on them, likely the DCU, the receiver that will radio connect with your electric meter, the new ones, that's where that's gonna go. I believe there are five stationed right now that we're putting up. We decided not to put them on the water tower because of issues where we wanted to have better access without having to climb a water tower with our electric crew, which is safer. So we can, we can get access to these with our equipment now rather than climbing. So we thought that was a better, better use for us. This is the first time you'll see, but we have the GIS pilot program. We're gonna start a pilot program and map out using a new GIS system that's a little bit more in-depth. We're gonna start with, the pilot program is gonna work from Hillcrest from the trail or the bridge on Bluff Road all the way to Highway fifteen and then approximately one or two blocks north and south. And it's gonna map that entire area. That map's gonna be utilized for that Hillcrest improvement project. And they're gonna work off that GIS data, use it as a pilot, see how well it works. It's designed and built in a way that you can update in real time. We can't do it right now, our GIS workshop doesn't allow us to go out in the field and update in real time. We just send it all off to G-Works and across your fingers it's correct. And then it was located with precision. This system is designed to be, I think, in less than a foot, which our current one I think is almost three feet here and now. And nowhere near correct. We're still working out data when they transferred from Beehive to GIS and whatever was before Beehive and back. And so we're still finding things that are incorrect in the current GIS. So we're gonna utilize the product, the pilot program for that capital project. And then we're gonna go back and review with Larry and Tim and Bob Myers and everybody else that's using GIS, what we got out of that. If we like it, we would like to move forward with the full implementation for the whole city for a new GIS. It will also have a far more detailed graphic, we know how to acquire that. And so we'll be able to zoom in a lot closer for visualization. And then ultimately, hopefully, we can stop getting the maps out of the hood of the truck and going out and doing locates off of those. Cause even those are getting to be a beast with the growth of the city and the new projects being rolled in and out, so. We really need to be accurate with our locates because there's a lot of stuff in the ground now. It's critically important, so.
What's the gas pump for?
The gas pump down at the wastewater treatment plant, everybody's gonna, the big users of that are gonna pay for that, right?
Yep.
And so that.
Five departments?
I think that system's mechanical with keys right now. And it's just constantly being repaired, like every other week, and so.
Kind of expensive gas pump for, I'm embarrassed.
It needs to be, it will have a scan card system for the police utilize it, public properties, water, wastewater, electric. So that's, that one is the unleaded gas.
It has lawn mowers and all that too, though.
The diesel they hold in their own, they have their own separate ones.
It's real easy, boy.
Does our cards use that too?
Nope.
Can we make a request for that?
And the shop, that's gonna be going expansion down here?
Yes.
They got room down there?
They have room for the shop, not room for their stuff. That's the problem they're running into now. And we like to keep as much of our stuff out of sitting outside as possible also because people like to steal it apparently. Not specific to electric, but we've had that issue recently in the past. So I continue to preach to lock all that stuff up, but there are dastardly people that still wanna do harm. Any other questions on electric? It's a really big budget, but again, power purchase makes up alone on the expense side. So go back and review your, way up there, sorry. Six point seven million of that is just passed through NPP, or NPPD, sorry. And also to BlueStem Energy for our wind turbine, it's mixed in there a little bit.
And Greg, how many years have we locked in with the purchase from them? It's like twenty-seven years generally with NPP.
It's over twenty years still, I believe. Alright, moving on, engineering. Engineering is split amongst three budgets, I think that's water, wastewater, and electric, is that correct, Nick?
Yep.
In general, love for.
Oh, for, in general. So we sent seventy-five percent of those other three, a quarter of it held in the general fund. Cause Mike does do work for streets, parks and rec, golf, things like that, so he's kind of split out amongst all of them. Nothing too significant in here, I know no significant items other than he's one of our big users of the plotter over in this building cause he prints out all his plans and specs and things like that he's working on for engineering documents, so. Any questions on engineering? Next we'll move on to fire and rescue, our volunteer fire department. Major items, our improvements around the building and preparation of the long-term plan for the north property. We did get that property cleaned up and house removed and filled in. We talked to Bob Corr at the request of Councilmember Singleton to look at what we can do to till that up. We have an industrial tiller down at the water plant that we can utilize. And then see when the coolness comes in here if we can get seated to grass. Cause long-term, the best we'll probably do is we could turn it back to parking, but without an actual physical plan, which is what we're planning for on that property to expand, current firehouse, it's gonna sit north of. And it doesn't have sidewalks now, so we'll put those back.
Tear them out and then we go put them back, yeah.
And then we'll turn on it.
Maybe.
Again.
Um, your salary on that one, is that the custodian?
Yep.
Yeah.
And that's an employee, not a tenant anymore?
Yep. That's our employee.
But they, they don't just do that building?
No, Roy does enough, multiple buildings, he does City Hall, so.
John, when are we gonna get off square one on billing insurance and Medicare? I mean, it's the Roman industry, grab, I mean, why not wanna do it?
It's, we've been reviewing that.
For years.
And then, but we gotta, you wanna make sure you're getting the right company. And it's probably gonna need help with Greg on us assisting that, but. We've been, we were gonna say, like eyeing Milford, we've been eyeing some of the others and trying to, David City's got a, one that's actually, they're self-supporting, they make enough on it. But we gotta make sure we're getting into the right system so it isn't costing us or giving us a burden. Plus, we, we would rather get into the system that they're only collecting from what insurance is gonna pay and not more out of their pocket.
Right, right, no, we don't wanna balance bill, but, yeah.
No, no, it, it's, we've had multiple companies come and talk to us already, so.
I'm, I'm hoping we can make some progress on that because.
Yeah.
Why not take care of getting money if we can?
It is, i- 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 a lot of it is old school, some, a lot of it's some of the old school, still there. It's always been a volunteer, not gonna change, you know, and it's trying, it's hard to get that mentality changed.
I know. Is there requirements that a city size, can you volunteer to such population and after a population like you have a required police department?
I don't.
You know what I'm saying, like if it's ten thousand, like once we get to ten thousand, then boom, we automatically have.
Cardi, Cardi is technically a volunteer fire. I don't know, they might have professional EMS. EMS is the heavy side.
What is it, the one by Omaha, can't think of the name.
Bellevue?
But is it, it's not.
Bellevue, Bennington.
There's one that they have, they're volunteer, they get three thousand calls a year.
Elkhorn?
No, it's in that area.
Austin? It's one of.
Bellevue, he said it, he just doesn't know.
No, no, it's not, maybe those are brownout.
We did a, we did a survey in City Hall the other day. And we noted that predominantly almost all the first-class cities, that's, there's about, how many, Mayor, thirty?
Yeah, twenty-first class cities, more than five thousand people.
Yep. And I think we and maybe one or two others may be the only ones that don't bill. And I think it was the way the question was asked, but predominantly they all bill.
So John, when you say, is this a fire department decision? The people that are serving on the fire department or is this a, who's making the decision at this point to not bill?
Fire department right now, but we are, we've leaned the last two years of, we're gonna say, bringing in companies and getting their steel. And, and yes, we are leaning more and more towards, but we also don't want a burden on coming back on us extra paperwork. We wanna make sure that's something that we're not gonna have to have, like a secretary entering something, so.
Well, there's a lot of, billing the insurance company is a lot of work, to be honest.
Yes.
Is there a way that you can work it with the hospital, that when they're doing their stuff that?
Is there a different payment system?
Yeah, they have a little one. The one that's probably the closest is David City's probably the one that we're leaning towards and he was just out, out very long ago. And they actually make enough on it that they're self-supporting, they don't even rely off the city of David City. They actually make too much of it, so.
So at what point do we have our holdings here that we make the decision that, sorry, fire department, you're gonna have to search your?
Just wanna try to keep peace.
At like the cost of two hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars a year?
Do you wanna go all paid? I'm just trying to say, we wanna try to go peacefully in and try to make everything go smoothly.
You know what volunteer fire department, and I think that's where, isn't that kind of, they kind of said they'll leave?
It happened almost probably thirty years ago that everybody walked over here with their badges. I don't wanna go into this situation like that again. I just wanted to make sure.
And yeah, I don't wanna come across it like, I appreciate it totally, one hundred percent appreciate it, but it's like at what point?
Well, I think you could, you could probably keep a volunteer fire department was still charging some for.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
Like there's common ground here.
Right.
Yeah. It, it, we're getting very close. If we can do all the legwork and do it all in itself, it's more acceptable from going from the old volunteer to, hey, we're going paid now. And some of them think that, you know, it's gonna cost, but it isn't gonna cost and that's what we're wanting to make sure. That, you're insured.
Where we wanna know this by like December thirty-first or?
Let's try to, I'll try to keep pushing it.
John, John, in the proposals that you're hearing, are they saying that you're going to have to have an administrator?
Some do, some don't.
They, or they would do the administrative work for you or?
Yeah, and then see, then you get into HIPAA.
Yeah.
So.
It's all gonna be that.
Yeah, yeah. But the one at David City, they have no administrator. The company does it for them.
Could you clarify some of this for us?
Cause I don't, I'm not exactly clear, I mean.
Most, most systems that I've talked to and. Most systems that I've talked to, and even the Beatrice one, I think, which is a pro- all professional fire EMS. They don't have any billing people anymore, it's all contracted out, they send their reports directly into the company. The company processes all of it, you check so many boxes, it adds up to this based on your fees, we bill it.
They're only charging insurance, they're not going after like individuals?
You said it, you tell them what to do.
You can set that, so a lot of these issues that we're hearing aren't gonna be, wouldn't be issues, it's just a question of whether you're gonna pull the trigger and do it or not. And that's what we've been discussing for a long time.
Yeah.
And then you pay the company prob- I believe it's a percentage.
Right.
Yeah, it's kinda like what we do now with our narcissus, e-narcissus, that we have to send it to the state, so we have to go online after every incident. We have to input all that into the state within seventy-two hours, so it'll be something that would tie right into that, where it would just kick it right over. But, we're getting, we're getting very close.
The biggest one, I remind the fire department, Councilmember Singleton, the chief, when we speak about the budget and stuff, is they have some significant capital costs coming down the pipeline, and they're proud of their rigs, and we wanna have the, the best equipment when it comes time for them to roll out, but they have the ladder truck, which is gonna need either retro or replace, which is our biggest piece of equipment, and then they obviously use the EMS facilities the most, and so they run those down the fastest.
So we're hoping that one we can refer, because otherwise we're talking a million dollars. And that ladder truck has to be sufficient to reach the highest building in our, in our town, which is Concordia.
Well, you provided for us, uh, uh, what was it, five or ten-year budget match many years ago, is that still valid?
That, that's still valid, that, that's still being maintained, and Greg kinda pushes on. So, yeah, that, ever since we got that, but we're very close to going charging.
The other one is continuing, and if we have more time to get into it, but continuing to look at our agreements with the rules and everything else. We continue to have lots of calls for us, our call volume's high, we still report to the interstate uh, and handle that call volume, and so just having eyes on those agreements and making sure they're safe, or not safe, but fair and valid and covering some of those costs, um, is, is pretty important, so.
And, and that, we go through, I go around and around every year with that, every year, so hopefully that gets smoother in the future.
Uh, next up is Gulf. Gulf had another great year, really high projections, daily greens fees, doing well, uh, memberships, passes, everything like that doing well. Uh, we saw an increase this year, uh, in our projected, we'll wait for the season to break out, but again, that additional approximately sixty thousand in revenue from beer and liquor sales, holding your own liquor license is significant, so. We've tried to pen out different ways to do restaurants and look at things like that, but we've not found any way to not potentially have some issues with the ultimate bottom line for the golf course, but we continue to wanna work in that direction. It's really just bouncing, melting out the liquor license issue. Biggest one for Gulf though, is different capital projects, the ones that the Gulf membership gets excited about, and so we'll just go ahead and skip down there. Uh, fixed assets, uh, some of these are just payments and some of the equipment that Dan utilizes out there. So his workman, his rough mower, fairway mower, greens mower lease, uh, purchase, and then both our utility cart that we utilize out there, and then the beer cart, uh, need to be replaced. Uh, they are gonna try and do some fundraising for this, but we have to have it locked into the budget, and then they'll try to utilize, just like we do with different markers on holes and things like that, where we auction those off every year as a revenue source. They're gonna try and see if they can either get some advertising or a rap or something else on these pieces of equipment to help offset the costs of them. But we wanna have them teed up.
And there's been interest in doing that, the problem we ran into is, well, if one person said, hey, we would wrap this with our logo, is that fair to anyone else who might wanna do it, and so we've been trying to use this bidding process in the past just so everyone who wants an opportunity can bid on it, one, we wanna maximize the benefit to the city, but two, we wanna be fair. Cause I don't, we don't want some other person who would be, were business, who'd be willing to donate, feel like they didn't have an opportunity to, to at least participate in that, so.
Uh, Dan, and working with the city engineers, done a really good job continuing to address some of the issues that have had moisture, especially nine, they've started digging into now that eight has been successful, so they'll continue to tackle that and look at drainage. But another big one, uh, that causes issues, either damaging the course or limiting the course's use, is cart paths. And so we're gonna go through in the areas where we have sunken cart paths or cart paths that are non-existent, uh, and people are running them up, causing other issues, or we're having to delay play, uh, because of moisture in the ground. So we're gonna utilize thirty thousand to extend cart paths into those low-lying areas to help with play, so. That kind of, that's it for Gulf for the year. Any questions on Gulf?
Salaries are strictly employees in all their departments?
Nope.
And then, is it true how I interpreted the fact that the clubhouse has no tax, cause it's not currently being leased out?
Correct. They sent us a question, they said, did you lease this? No, so we're not operating it for anybody's private use anymore. Correct.
So, something to keep in mind, if you did decide to lease it out, you'd have, you'd have an immediate expense of paying real estate taxes on it again, so.
That was an inquiry by Maryland District's office. Any other Gulf questions? Alright, moving on from Gulf library. Becky continues to do a great job over in the library, we've had a little bit of shuffle. Um, actually a lot of shuffle unfortunately with, uh, employees over there, so we still continue to have staffing changes overs and staffing will say issues, so, uh, but they continue to work through that, I think we just hired or made an offer letter on our third of the three full-time positions over there, so we filled that third position finally, so. We've been sitting on for over a year probably, one open full-time position due to different issues, so. Um, but I can answer any questions we have on the library, like I said, nothing super significant in there. I think she has one donation I have identified, um, I think that's her child area shelving upgrade. I think there's a corresponding revenue for that in the donations, is that correct? Yep.
Which employees are salaried out of the library, cause that cannot just be corporations?
Uh, that would be the, uh, director and the assistant director are the two salaried employees.
Yep.
There's one other full-time employee that.
The salaries are for all the, that's everybody, that's our, well, we pay wages for everyone in, in the library.
And that's strictly just the library?
Yes, two hundred and ninety-six.
And there's how many employees?
They're prob- they're probably twelve or fifteen total, with all the, there's quite a few part-time and regular part-time employees. You've got the four, uh, like twenty hours a week, thirty hours a week.
Some work five to ten.
Yeah.
They have their own, what they did at the time, they have their own custodian as well, that also sets up your rooms, tables, chairs. Changes all the light bulbs out, does all the cleaning, bathroom clean.
It's pretty consistent over the years, you can see that it's.
Yeah, Becky's up true in regards.
I guess the answer, our question would be, how many full-time employees do we got?
Three.
There's three, and the re- and the rest are all temps?
No.
Yeah, I'm thinking.
It's also the facility that's open the most.
Yeah, I mean, the hours are pretty extensive.
I mean, they gotta cover evenings and weekends, and we're not covering hours.
I'm sure it's there, obviously.
Any other questions on library? We're going Parks and Rec. Uh, you see there in Parks and Rec, we have a whole bunch of different revenue sources, so camping's fees, we put our farm lease fees in here. Money that we receive for park improvements, and then we have all of our recreational programming and the revenues those generate, uh, identified there.
So, the land leases went down, did we lose some acres?
We did, Real Campus.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, you're right.
Real Campus, Carol Cave Project, a few of those different ones, and then we just sent out notice that we canceled our farm leases for next year, then we'll re-bid them this fall or early next winter, so.
Are farm leases associated with the real yard, the real campus?
Not anymore, that's a main disagreement between John Heath and ourselves, he maintains that property for us.
That's just it?
And then that's it.
Okay.
So, the given trades, just a dollar lease.
Do we ever get a kickback from like the softball association?
Don't say kickback. The softball association, baseball associations do.
Revenue, revenue, there you go.
They do contribute, uh, and donate money for funds that they raise, but it's essentially either we have something we want them to, predominantly it's them coming to us and saying, hey, we wanna do this project, we have money for it, here it is, go do it. So, I think one that's going on right now is on the two-plex softball. Uh, I believe Concordia, the school district, the softball association, all helped pay for that shed. And then our street department and public properties department and a little bit of electric helped get it set, so they could put it on top of it. But, we just contributed our labor, we didn't contribute any funds to that, uh, the other one is that's not used for rec programming. We don't need a shed for our stuff, so. Um, just various revenues, those revenues are kinda all over the place, cause they still kinda seep back into, um, some of the different programs that were COVID-related previously, but, but next year we'll be up and running on everything, so. Cause I think basketball last year, for instance, we had zero, we just didn't have enough people sign up, and, uh, wrestling was the same, for rec wrestling. We didn't do either one of those.
Your pub pro, five sixty-two oh one?
Public properties. Parks and Rec is a mix of public properties, public properties tends to be all the other areas that we own. City Hall and the maintenance of the outside of that, the yard, the library, grass, things like that, anything that's maintained by pop course crew.
So then who, who's primarily in those salaries then?
Um, that one I'm guessing is Brent, Bob, and then Alex, Jared. Adam is not, Adam is in Parks and Rec specifically.
And that's, yeah, recreation would be his, right?
Um, let's see, what else have other, Parks and Rec, again, nothing significant, replacing some backstop poles and adding a new sand pro. We just continue to see usage for tournaments and other purposes, and so having another sand pro on hand will be beneficial to helping maintain the fields and getting them game-ready. Uh, we set aside money for Emerald Ashore again this year.
Is that to replace the trees, or is that to treat?
All kinds of stuff, just anything that the tree board wants to recommend, if they're like, hey, we identified one that's infested, the cost of getting it down immediately, working with the state arborist, uh, whatever it may be, but just trying to have some money in the fund. So if somebody identifies an issue, we can try to address it one way or the other.
Are there any specific trees that are city trees that we're protecting?
At this time, no, we're not doing anything specific, but, uh, we have an intermix in all over the place, so. Uh, next year, a big cost in one of our rec programmings is new helmets, the helmets we have are ten years certified. Once that certification's up, you have to junk them, get rid of them, we may, uh, look to do like a fundraiser and sell the old ones just as mementos you could put up, and otherwise we literally have to throw them away, so, uh, but.
You might wanna be careful on selling those, just to be aware of that.
Well, would the helmets mean?
Yeah.
Yeah, it wouldn't be to, to use, it would be like, so probably a display and stuff.
That you might make them unusable before you sell them.
Yeah, rip all the padding out of them and all that stuff.
Yeah, yeah.
Cause there's.
We had talked about.
Liability issues.
Same thing with like the, like the playground equipment that the, the elementary school had, like some people wanted to take some of the old stuff, and they're like, no, for like, for the same reasons, you, once it's done, it's done, no one wants liability, so you can't just go dumpster diving for, you know, monkey bars.
We'll pay ten, we'll pay ten to make an awesome waiver yet this time too, that you take the liability with us.
Yes.
Um, and other than that, nothing huge in, in this budget, it just hits a lot of different areas, buildings and grounds, upkeep, things like that.
And who is that for salary?
Think a little bit out of Bob, is that correct?
Um, and probably some boys, uh.
That'd be the custodian for city hall, and some other facilities.
Pop core salaries split between our, uh, public properties and rec.
Uh, let's see, like I said, over the CFPs, poles for the baseball field backstop, the sand pro, and then, uh, the portion of municipal building remodeled that's still waiting, and then we're also gonna redo this driveway over here, and have the street crew help do some of these panels that are all broken up outside the drive, uh, outside the gates out here on this building. And that's it for public properties, parks and rec, buildings and grounds. Next up, planning zoning, again, this is the other app of Mr. Dork's office. Nothing too huge here, other than maybe, um, just note that we previously told you that we removed the levee, so this one like has a huge movement both in the grant dollars and also the expenses, you'll see down there, going from two hundred and twenty-two thousand to twenty-seven thousand, that's a significant dip. But, municipal building remodel and the plotter in there as well, so the plotter is predominantly used to print all the flats, everything else that we utilize in review and provide in planning permission, so, that's planning zoning. Next up is police, and they have a few different revenue sources there, um, and then their equitable sharing. And then we have salaries and everything else.
Why are salaries bump a hundred thousand?
Uh, this is because we were out a whole person this year, from the retirement of Alan Baldwin all the way until today. We're still down one person, so through the shakeup, and then the other one is, I believe we're, we're not paying Walden anymore, correct? We have an officer deployed, and so at the point that all of his benefits run out, then he's covered under his deployment, so.
And your community service officer is probably in there too, correct?
Yep.
Now, in your revenue, what, where does the, like, tickets, citations, all of that revenue? The city, the police department doesn't get any of that, right?
We spend a lot of time doing stops, we don't get that much. So, how does that work?
Constitution, all fines go to the state.
School fund. Because we, we just waste, uh, we spend all that money on gas, but then we don't get nothing out of if we're studying, cause we know all, all the time the vehicles are running.
Isn't the liquidated damages half of the parking tickets? Nebraska citations go to the.
The state citations go there, is?
City things part week, when I fill out the sheets, half go one place, half go another place.
You know on that one?
Not for certain, not, not for certain, I know that, um, the fines and bills go to the school, and, um.
Look, in the same, for doing patrols, we should be patrolling town, not be, because all our money that's, is going to the.
Well, I don't think we're gonna.
I think there's a school district that would disagree with you.
I don't think, I don't think we're gonna change the state constitution here tonight, so.
It's a catch twenty-two, I know, I just.
I know with the parking citations, when I fill out our revenue sheets, half, they get split in half, and half is that liquidated damages. And half, I don't remember what it's called, so I think that that liquidated damages is half of the parking tickets.
How much is a parking ticket?
Ten dollars.
That's probably about right then.
What's our math there, how many parking tickets is that? It's seven hundred bucks.
Hundred and seventy?
Hundred and forty tickets.
Hundred and forty tickets.
Yeah, I mean, about right.
So that's not even one a day.
No.
I'm disappointed, I mean, I, I understand the, doing the speed traps and stuff like that, but it's, it's kinda frustrating when we don't get nothing out of it for wasting all the gas and the time.
You do get something out of it, you get public safety.
I, I understand, but in the end, too, it's us.
And you pay less in your, uh, taxes to the school district because they have another revenue source.
Cause hire more officers, we give more money, give us more debt.
Police department was good.
Okay, anything else in the police department?
No.
Just kinda the standard stuff, we try to space out all our vehicles as best we can to just buy one every year rather than leasing one every year.
We're still on the drug, we're still getting stuff, the one from the drug fund, we still get that.
Yep, that's on request, though, I mean, it's nothing that we specifically identify ahead of time, we have to get approval for that.
And when did we get the last one?
I don't, I don't know. All right, that is police, Real Campus, um, if we sell any lots, this is where we show revenue source, so we're not projecting any, just to ensure that. And then we previously put thirty thousand in for engineering consulting fees, we haven't been utilizing that in the last year, predominantly because, um, we've, uh, been utilizing Mikes. And so we reduced that down to fifteen just for any sort of extras that are above and beyond Mike's, uh, abilities or or time availability. And so we kept fifteen thousand in there for that. And then just administrative fees, and we have to, the cost of transferring lots and things like that, so cover postings and notices and stuff, to lay it out. Uh, not, nothing too terribly exciting in Real Campus.
Love the consulting piece I'm using, Jake?
Uh, it's using whoever we need, so sometimes it's J E O, because we're doing surveys, and they're the ones that are the first one available, and we're like, hey, we need survey done. Drainage study, we do, we wouldn't do any drainage stuff, that's our predominant concern, always out there is drainage issues as we continue to expand. Recycling, this one's got one big one, this one kinda stays the same, and if you haven't been noticing, the recycling market is terrible, there is no revenue to be had. And so, uh, if you're watching the news reports, frontline, any of that kinda stuff, they just continue, especially on the plastic side. There is no market, it's usually being sold off to somebody out of negative, just to get rid of it and not put it in a landfill. The one we do have is we have, uh, in here a retaining wall, the wall that borders on the east side, that sloped hill along all of those properties. Is essentially just sloughing away down to our side, and so we need to shore it up.